Let me need order, please rise. He asked you to join me in a moment of reflection on the business that's before us this evening. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the role. Alderman Bassel.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford. Alderman Folkerson.
Present.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Kamarski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor City Clerk Treasure and Attorney. All right, thank you. Well, it's my, uh, um, pleasure to have two special presentations tonight. First, I'd like to, uh, honor two people, but I'd like to, uh, honor an individual that I've known, uh, for forty years and, uh, as a friend and a neighbor, and I know it's forty years because that's when I moved into my house and, uh, happened to be, uh, just a couple of doors down, and, uh, he's given up a lot of time and effort to do a lot of things here for the city, and, uh, he served on the council for twenty-two years, and before that was on the zoning board of appeals and, uh, has, you know, given a lot of his time to, uh, to the city. So, Alan, if I could have you step forward up here and, uh...
I've got a present proclamation to, presented to Alan L. Folkerson, Ward Three Alderman, from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand nineteen. Whereas Alan Folkerson has served as fellow citizens as Ward Three Alderman for twenty-two years, and his logical and to-the-point observations, Alan's motivation has always been serving the best interests of the residents of the city of Palos Heights. Alan has made a valuable contribution to the community, beginning as a member of the zoning board before being elected as Alderman. Alan served as the chairman of the finance and ad hoc cable committees, and also serving in license, water, planning, and zoning committee. Alan has always served to the utmost integrity. Now, therefore, the city of Palos Heights expresses its heartfelt appreciation to Alan Folkerson for twenty-two years of outstanding leadership and dedicated, dedicated service to the city of Palos Heights and giving back to the community. We extend our sincere best wishes that he may enjoy many more happy years and productive years in the city of Palos Heights. Presented the sixteenth day of April twenty nineteen, Robert Strauss, Mayor.
As the mayor said, I, I came here, pointed to fill an unfulfilled term of prior Ward Three Alderman in nineteen ninety-seven, and when I arrived here, I could best describe the mood in the city council chambers toxic. That led to a number of things that I'll touch on later this evening, but first and foremost, in two thousand one, Mayor Strauss was elected, and when that election occurred, there were other changes on the city council, and with those changes came a, um, an atmosphere that I would call, uh, I wrote it down because I knew I'd forget, amicable. And, and that amicable relationship in the last five or six or seven years has now become harmonious, and that's because members of this council have a deep understanding that every individual's entitled to their own opinion. Sometimes we differ, but we respect one another, and we act in the best interest of what we believe are those of, uh, the citizens of Palos Heights. I want to thank the members of the council, I want to thank the mayor for allowing me to serve with them. I want to thank the, uh, people of Ward Three for the trust they put in me, and I want to say it's been an honor to serve them, as well as the residents of the community as a whole. Um, again, I thank you, members of the council, for the honor to serve with you. Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor.
Some of you may not realize this, but Alan was instrumental in Channel Four getting, uh, expanding the way it has over the last number of years, and, uh, yeah, with that in mind, uh, as soon as he gets done here, we'll, uh, ask, uh, Ron Czankowski to come up and say a few words, if you would.
Ron?
Well, Alderman, I don't know if you remember, eighteen years ago, you hired me as volunteer, and you had several meetings with me on Saturday mornings. I think you're stealing a little bit of what I was gonna say in the ad hoc cable. Okay, I'll cut it short, but I want to give recognition. You opened up the door, and you asked me, "Ron, can you do something with this, with your experience with Channel Five and NBC television?", and I said, "Yes, I could." And you stepped aside, and you let me take it to a premier, uh, television station that is probably one of the most proactive in the southwest region. And if it weren't for your attitude of, "Ron, do what you think is necessary", and, uh, it, it just wouldn't have happened. So you were there for me, you supported me, and I do appreciate that, I want to thank you for that. And, uh, everyone at Channel Four, in the team of Channel Four, respects what you have done in the early, uh, years of Channel Four, and I've explained to them where we're at and how we got here, and, uh, we just want to recognize you for that. You, you have allowed us to get to this point, and I want to thank you for that. I, I think that, uh, some things that people don't remember is when we started, we were Channel Six. I confirmed that with you right before the meeting tonight. Yes. And I also think that, um, we'd be remiss if we didn't mention Tess Sendakis and Carol Stephan, because before we got to you, they met with me on behalf of the legal women voters in February, March of nineteen ninety-eight, and I touched upon the fact that I thought things here were toxic, and as part of that, uh, we'd been approached by Cablevision, which is now Comcast, and they'd offered us public access, and I thought that would be a great idea. It wasn't a popular idea with a lot of the Aldermen and, um, other members of the council. Mayor Coldenhoven was behind it, and so were three others, so we were able to form the ad hoc cable committee, and Carol and Tess took turns recording meetings. We didn't have anything live in those days, and they took a VHS recorder, camera, and then created the tape, and then the following morning, they would play it back along with bulletin board topics that were created by, then it was Debbie, um, Orico, now it's Debbie Rosine, when she was in the clerk's office, and those would air for the next two weeks until we did it all over again. But things certainly changed when you and Sue came here, and I'm grateful for that, and I'm, um, happy that you're happy with the way I let you have freedom. Well, I'm, I'm speaking for Sue as well. Thank you. Everything I told you. Uh, we thank you again, and, uh, what I don't want to go unnoticed is, we have a volunteer position open for you. Thank you. I think I'll enjoy my Tuesday nights for a while.
The, uh, next individual we'd like to recognize tonight, uh, is an individual who, some people kind of go through life, and, uh, some people, you know, give their life to others, and, uh, I think Mike Lynch is a prime example of someone who gives their life to others in our town. I mean, uh, I see Mike, whether it be in the grocery store, church, around town all the time, and he's always pleasant and, uh, an active individual, uh, you know, besides devoting his, uh, his life as a family practice physician here in town to the people of Palos Heights, he's also taken his time out from that busy endeavor to devote many, many years to, uh, School District One Twenty-Eight. So, uh, Mike, if you'd like, please step up.
This is a congratulatory proclamation presented to Dr. Michael Lynch, board member of Palos Heights Elementary School District One Twenty-Eight. Recognizing Dr. Lynch's twenty-five years of leadership and service, the city of Palos Heights expresses its heartfelt appreciation for his twenty-five years of service, we extends our sincere best wishes to, that he may enjoy many, many productive years. Presented the sixteenth day of April, signed by myself. So, Mike.
Well, I moved out here to Palos Heights in nineteen eighty-three, when I started family practice, and being from the South Side of Chicago, I just automatically, South Side Irish Catholic, you're going to St. Al's. And people told me, "You don't know the first thing about School District One Twenty-Eight", so I filled a two-year vacancy on the school board back in nineteen ninety-four, and it's twenty-five years later, I'm just getting off of this, you know? I cannot thank the, the school district, I feel, has done a fantastic job with the administration, we got great kids, and the statistics for Palos Heights, and the way the kids do is fantastic, and it's been so much fun to work with them and everything. I've had a great time, I'm not sure if any of you were here when we had to go through all the hassle, the impact fees for the, uh, new Westgate. We used to come to those meetings all the time, so that, I think that benefited not only the school district, but Palos Heights, when we used to come here for all those meetings to get that done. And then my last endeavor we did together was on the rec center, so I think it's been a great time with the city council and the school board working together, and the accomplishments we have done together has been fantastic, so I can't thank you enough. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mike? Congratulations.
Thank you.
As Mike spoke to earlier, we've had a great relationship with One Twenty-Eight here at the city over the last couple of years, uh, number of years, especially with the development of the rec center and, uh, some trading, some property back and forth, and it wouldn't have been possible without the, uh, the members of One Twenty-Eight and within, seeing what we're trying to do here as a city and what they're trying to do as a school district. And, uh, that's one of the reasons, you know, whether it be School District One Twenty-Eight, uh, you know, One Eighteen, Two Eighteen, uh, Two Thirty, uh, that gives us, you know, living here in Palos Heights is one of the best things we've got going for us are our schools, and our public schools, and, uh, and even in private schools also, makes, uh, Palos Heights a great place to live. So again, thank you, Mike, and your whole school board for everything you guys do for us, uh, we really appreciate it, so thank you. All right, moving along on the consent calendar, got a number of items here, approval of minutes of a city council meeting of March nineteenth, twenty nineteen, the approval of payroll and voucher list for the period ending April twelfth, twenty nineteen, the approval of requests from St. Alexander's School to conduct their annual five K raider walk run on Thursday, May ninth, twenty nineteen, from five until seven on a designated route in Old Palos and Nevahoe Hills, approval of requests by Richards Bicycles to conduct a tent sale on, uh, May eighteenth through twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, approval of requests from Richards Bicycles also to conduct a e-bike event on July thirteenth, fourteenth, and August seventeenth and eighteenth, and the approval of, for requests by Ms. Recordia to conduct her annual candy day fundraiser in the city of Palos Heights on Friday, uh, April twenty-sixth and April twenty-seventh. With that, entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Move Alderman Kamarski, second by Alderman Violet. Any discussion? Rule call. Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Folkerson.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, no sealed bids tonight, just a couple of remarks I have tonight. I'd like to thank the Public Works commi-, uh, people for being out on Sunday, who would have thought we would have been shoveling snow, uh, in the middle of April, but they were out there with the snow shovels, we thought were ready for tripping service, but, uh, we had to make a quick switch, and, uh, and they got it done, so again, thank you. Uh, I'm looking for a motion, the next, on, on number seven, is to, a motion for the, to change our code as far as the number of liquor licenses we've been issuing, uh, just kind of a clerical, uh, snafu over the years, when we've issued a new liquor license, we never re-did the ordinance to reflect the, the one coming off when a liquor license did, uh, change, so I need a motion to approve an ordinance correcting. Move Alderman Kamarski.
Second.
Second by Alderman McGo-, uh, McGovern. Discussion, all, your rule call. Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Folkerson.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
All right, I've got a number of appointments to various committees, and this comes up in April because of the, uh, election timing and when they were appointed, so unless there's a, any, uh, opposition, I like to do them all one time, just to make it easier. Uh, approving the, the following reapportments, Pat Scully to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term, John Sexton to the Police and Fire Commission for a three-year term, Charles Dorff to the Police and Fire Commission for a three-year term, Matt Hunt to the Police Pension Board for a two-year term, Denise Hyker to the Recreation Advisory Board for a five-year term, and Linda Skapa to Recreation Advisor Board for a five-year term. Move Alderman McGovern.
Second.
Second by Alderman Violet. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Then finally, I need a motion to approve a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close a portion of Harlem Avenue on July fourth, nineteen, twenty, uh, twenty nineteen, for, obviously, the annual Fourth of July parade, from ten-thirty until two o'clock. So moved? Move Alderman Key, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Violet. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have two announcements regarding public hearings. First, a public hearing has been scheduled before the Zoning Board of Appeals on Monday, April twenty-second, twenty nineteen, at six P.M., to consider a petition for a zoning variance to allow a six-foot, six-inch side yard setback to allow for the construction of a garage at one-twenty-two hundred South Sixty-Ninth Avenue, John Evans Petitioner, docket number two thousand and nineteen zero-two. On second, a public hearing has been scheduled before the Zoning Board of Appeals on Monday, April twenty-second, twenty nineteen, at six P.M., to consider a petition for a zoning variance to allow a seven-foot yard setback to allow for the construction of an oversized detached garage of twelve-hundred square feet at one-two-five-five-four South Seventy-Sixth Avenue, John Sokolowski, Petitioner, docket number two thousand and nineteen zero-three, and that's all I have.
All right. All right, next, City Treasurer, since you're well rested, these tax days are over, and you can handle that, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This represents the treasurer's report for the period ending March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. The general fund began with a beginning cash balance of two million, nine hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-two cents, revenues of two million, fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-five cents, expenses of nine hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and one cent, other source use, eighteen thousand, two, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents, leaving ending cash in general fund of four million, fifty thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. The total of all funds began the month with a beginning cash balance of fifteen million, eight hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and nineteen cents. Total revenues for the month were three million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents, expenses totaling one million, seven hundred and two thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-one cents, other source use, seventy-six thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and ninety-eight cents, leaving a total balance in all funds of seventeen million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. That completes my report, Mr. Mayor.
entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's. Move Alderman Folkerson, second by Alderman Violet. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City Attorney?
Uh, I have no report, other than to congratulate Alderman Folkerson for his total combined, I think, thirty-five years of service, which I have to guess is about half his lifetime, uh, which is a lot of meetings, a lot of hard work, and something that the public probably doesn't appreciate so much is all the time spent on all of that stuff, so I, I'd just like to, uh, commend him and thank him for all of the cooperation he's shown us over the years.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Any communication, even, Alderman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to announce that the Cal Sag Bridge on Southwest Highway is reduced to one lane in each direction for cleaning. The project is expected to be completed by the end of October, please use caution as lagers will be present. I would also like to thank Alderman Folkerson, I've been, um, on the city council with him for almost twenty years. Um, it was rough when I first got here, you know, there was a lot of dissension, as Attorney Brown will remember, and, um, you know, I've always respected Alan for never participating in that, so, um, I'm gonna miss you, Alan. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. And citizens wishing to address the council, I'm sorry.
Communication.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Along the lines with Mayor pointing out, with contributions that Dr. Lynch made, um, in his schnala, we have Rhonda Kearney and her husband do a lot of work, and they sent in a letter, uh, and I'll just read parts of it, 'cause it's a little longer than, uh, we need to go over, but, um, hello, Mike, we are very, uh, she's talking about this past weekend, "We had a very successful cleanup day. Have you ever looked at one hundred and thirty-first Street? What an improvement. We were very lucky with the weather on Saturday, hard-working volunteers from Palos, and had a su-, had super support from, this is an important part, from Public Works and the Police Department. Um, Mike, I would like to thank the two departments for their help. What's the best way, uh, I hope this letter can find its way to a meeting." And then she went on to talk about, uh, "The volunteers all agreed that the one hundred and thirty-first Street ditch needs cleaning up, as it is choked with downed trees, limbs, overgrown weeds, remnants from dead weeds, grasses from years past, et cetera." And there's some other things that she covers, which we'll deal with within the city, which, uh, they found a few things that we need to address, and that, um, uh, she said, "If anybody's interested, you could check, is schnala next door for photos and a write-up about the day's activities?" Uh, she said, "We are very blessed to have some hard-working residents, uh, from Palos Heights who take pride in our subdivision." Um, Mike, who's her husband, and I will finish up the Harlem side of, uh, the cleanup this week or next, depending on the weather. We ran out of a little bit of steam on Saturday, um, unfortunately, we're seeing more and more debris, uh, keep coming, uh, those darn litter bugs. So, um, it's just people like this and people in the, in the Palos community, as the mayor pointed out, there's so many things that go on behind the scenes, uh, as even with the, uh, Channel Four, it's, sometimes it doesn't get recognized, little things like this, but it's important. That's, that's the end of it.
All right. Anything else?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to thank everyone that came out to vote a couple of weeks ago, and we had a, uh, larger-than-usual turnout, especially in my ward, and I'd like to thank everybody that, that did vote, and, and especially those that did vote for me. I appreciate it and look forward to another four years. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Citizens wishing to address the council? All right, that's cool. Standing committees, Alderman Folkerson.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Public Safety, Alderman McGovern.
Uh, the only thing I have to add, uh, Mr. Mayor, is the Public Safety, uh, meeting, committee meeting next Tuesday will be canceled.
All right, thank you, sir. Municipal grounds of property, Alderman Bassel.
Yes, Mayor, I have several items on the agenda. Item number fourteen, motion to approve the purchase of an algae cura maintenance program for Lake Catherine from McCloud Aquatics in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Move Alderman Bassel, second by Alderman Kamarski. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, just do a roll call on that, I'm sorry.
Item fifteen.
We're gonna do a roll call on that. Alderman Bassel.
Yes.
Aye. Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Folkerson.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Item fifteen, motion to approve the purchase of lawn service and vegetation control from True Green in the amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Move Alderman Bassel, second by Alderman Kamarski. Rule call? Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Folkerson.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes. Item number sixteen, motion to approve the purchase of a replacement pickup truck for the motor vehicle maintenance department through the suburban purchasing cooperative in the amount of thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Move Alderman Bassel. Second. Second by Alderman Violet. Any discussion? Rule call. Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Folkerson.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes. And that's the end of my report.
All right, planning and zoning, Alderman Clifford's not here, anybody that's got the report I've seen, okay. Let's go to recreation, Alderman Key.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to officially, uh, welcome Matt Fairbanks, who is now on duty, he's the new Parks and Recreation Director, and I know that there's a lot of things happening within the department that are ongoing, and so he's hitting the ground running, and, um, so I'm looking forward to working with him, and I know he's, uh, he's anxious to, to get going here. And then, um, this Saturday is the annual Chocolate Chase Five K, uh, for the city rec department. It's actually in the, um, parking lot of Harvest Church, right across from the rec center. It's from nine o'clock to one o'clock. You can still register for that race, if you go to the rec department website, there's, um, an online, uh, registration form, and so you can sign up there. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Rules of construction, Alderman Kamarski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve a resolution establishing prevailing wage rates on public works contracts.
Move Alderman Kamarski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bassel, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Move to approve a payment to IDOT in the amount of thirteen thousand, eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents for the Ridgeland Avenue project.
Second.
Move Alderman Kamarski and second by Alderman Key. Any discussion? Rule call? Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Folkerson.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kamarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Nessie Underwood, report, Mayor.
One thing, uh, I guess would fit into your report, uh, just like to let everybody know that on, uh, let's see, it's the thirtieth of April, at eleven o'clock, we will have the long-awaited groundbreaking for the Arrowhead, uh, water project, to get the flooding out of the people in the, uh, around one hundred and thirty-first and Harlem. Now, I've been on the council eighteen years, I've asked Margaret to invite the Torterichis, who I know have been adamant about coming to meetings for the last thirty, I think, to get them out of the flood zone, so, uh, that's taken, this is a combination between ourselves, the Park, I mean, the Forest Preserve District and MWRD, so the groundbreaking has been set, so it is actually going to start, yes.
Mr. Mayor, this has been going on since Bonnie Strack was mayor, and with all due respect, perhaps you could invite the Torterichis to that.
I understand, I'm gonna make that, yes, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
They ask me every time I see them.
I know.
Which is a lot.
I know.
Hopefully it doesn't rain, right. Nice information franchise.
Mr. Mayor, um, according to the agenda, we have two items, but we picked them up under the consent calendar.
All right.
So that'll free me up to, uh, also, I just want to mention that, um, I want to wish Alan Folkerson the best of luck. Um, when I came on the council back in May of two thousand one, uh, one of the first meetings, things I had to do was preside over license permit and franchises, and I had no clue as to what I was doing. And, um, Alan, uh, was always a mentor and Shep, helped shepherd, uh, me through, especially the first, oh, five or ten years, and, um, it was really great to have him on license permits the entire time, and I was fortunate to not only be on that committee with him, but on all four of the committees that I'm, um, involved in, and, um, he's, uh, gonna be sorely missed, uh, uh, his legal background came in handy on any number of issues that we've addressed over the last eighteen years, and, um, as Dee Kamarski pointed out, a lot of the things that, uh, we would maybe be betwixt between on, Alan would help us solve, and, um, not only was he a great asset to the committee, but, uh, over the years, I was fortunate enough to count Alan as a great friend, and I'll never forget that. And, um, lastly, as Alderman Bassel pointed out, I was also up for reelection, I want to thank the people in the fourth ward, uh, for entrusting me again, um, and hopefully we'll continue to do the best we can for you and all the friends, and, um, I appreciate all the support. That's it for me.
All right, thank you, sir. Water and sewer, Alderman Violet.
Uh, I have no report, Mr. Mayor, but, uh, I too would like to mention that Alderman Folkerson served on the water and sewer committee in all the time that I've been the chairman, and, uh, over the years, I've come to appreciate his wit and his intelligence and his leadership,
time, and the city wasn't in that good a financial shape years ago." And they mentioned your leadership on the Finance Committee in particular, and every person that I said your name to said how much they appreciated your leadership in regards to the finances of the city, because when that is stable, it makes all of our jobs just that much easier. And so thank you for that.
Thank you. All right.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
You did know how to read all that kind of stuff, and you really know how to take care of all that kind of business, but as far as the finances went. I think, I think you, I think Jan, and Frank, I think you were quite a team for the longest period of time, now with Jim. And even when I talked to Jan a couple of times, she turned around and said, "Oh, I know exactly what they're going to, what they're going to want. I know exactly how they're going to want it." I'm still used to listening to those, working with you two, that it was so easy to do. You made people's jobs here easier.
Thank you.
You were a hell of a mentor to me, excuse me, you were a hell of a mentor to me. Anyway, you are going to be missed.
Channel Four.
A lot of what I plan to touch upon tonight, Ron covered earlier, so, as I told him when he stood at the podium, he was stealing my thunder, so he made my report tonight on this last ad hoc cable report. A lot easier, but I would be remiss if I didn't thank the present, past, and hopefully future volunteers at Channel Four for their willingness to give us their time, talent, and treasure, because they have some very innovative people that participate freely on Channel Four. And I'd just like to, one last time, offer this up to anyone in the viewing audience. You don't have to live in Palos Heights. If you're interested in learning about television production, studio operation, video manipulation, for lack of a better term, in particular, if you're a student, whether in high school, well, I guess we can't do high school anymore, at Moraine Valley, St. Xavier's, Lewis, anywhere else in the viewing audience, and you want to participate, and you want to gain invaluable experience that's free, I can't tell you that there's a better place to go. You'll learn a lot from Ron and his staff, and you'll be happy that you undertook that challenge. So I hope that people will call City Hall in the future and let Ron and other people here know that they want to participate on Channel Four. And again, thank you all the members of the committee for your willing participation in this project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any old business?
Citizens wishing to ask questions? As good a time as ever to talk about this, not to take away from Alderman Folkerstein's thunder tonight, but tonight in the audience, we've got Brett Lewndowski, who's going to be incoming alderman for the third ward, along with Alderman Kamarski. So I think you can see you've got some big shoes to fill after all the accolades that Alderman Folkerstein has got this evening, and he's done a great job for the last 22 years, and will be missed, and personally, I just can't do any more than thank you as much as I can for, you know, all your friendship and your help over the last, my 18 years in office, so thank you. Any new business? Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right.